Tell me when you're ready. Okay, good evening. It is now 7:00 PM and I'd like to go ahead and open up the meeting for the January meeting for the zoning board of adjustment for the city of Laconia. And with that, may we have roll call.
Mike Delavecchia.
Here.
Roland Mayhew.
Yeah.
Suzanne Purley.
Here.
Bori Gibbs.
Here.
Michael Foote.
Here.
And Steve Boger.
Here. Okay. Staff in attendance.
Dean Trefethan, planning director.
And, all right, we'll move on to acceptance of the minutes from the previous meeting.
I'm over accept the minutes from the previous meeting as written.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor. Okay, the minutes have been accepted as written. All right, before I get started with the applications, I do want to remind everybody that in the meeting, when we open it up to the public for public hearings on different applications, please direct your comments to the board and not to the other folks in the audience. And also, do not direct your questions to the applicant but to the board. And the board will, if it deems necessary, ask the appropriate questions. Okay? With that, we're going to go ahead and get started with extensions. We have extension, we have actually three extensions from the same group. We're going to go ahead and hear all three extensions at the same time and then we'll vote on them individually by application number. Okay? So we have extension number zero, Z-02009-0027, request for an extension for the application. We have also application, extension application 0029, which is an extension, and then 0030, which is an extension. If the applicant's here and ready, please come forward. Tell us how we may help you, please.
Good evening, everybody. Chris Dupree on behalf of the applicants. I don't believe there are any new faces on the board since I was here in July.
That's one.
Sorry.
I'm the new guy.
Well, congratulations. You know, I think the packet pretty well spells out the properties in question. There's the special exception on the height variance for the three-building project on the Aqua Waterfront parcel. That also had the special exception for multifamily in the shorefront residential. And then the second parcel that had the multifamily exception as well. You know, the, I was in front of the planning board in October and they granted a one-year extension to our planning board approvals for this project. So, you know, I'm kind of in the off-cycle with zoning board where I'm back every six months, offering a progress update as to the status. And, you know, I think, as most of you know, we've been moving along with development along Scenic Road. We, from the time that this was originally permitted, we built the 24-unit lodge building on a different parcel. And that is completed and we're in sales with that. And those sales have been picking up nicely and progressing along. So, you know, we're looking further at trying to get this project under construction. The townhomes across the street, which were the 19 units, have all been built and all been sold. And then we acquired a couple of parcels to tie everything together over the past several years and received approvals for an eight-unit townhome project, Spindle View Townhomes, which we, we have four of the eight units completed. And, you know, we're putting in the last two foundations now and completing those this year as well. So, as it relates specifically to the Aqua Waterfront parcel, you know, we're now actively trying to finance this project so we can move forward with construction. So, you know, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Are there any questions? I open this to the public.
Do we have any questions?
I don't think we have any.
Request for extensions?
I don't open these up to the public for extensions. No, I didn't think so.
Can you just clarify what the extension date will be? July, will it be July 2018? We're doing six months?
Yes.
So it'll be July 2018?
Yes.
On all three of them?
Yes. And if I read the calendar correctly, I put in for the next meeting, the July meeting. Usually I miss that by a few days, one way or the other.
Get right to it.
So, on any, you've concluded for all three applications?
I have.
Okay. So are there any questions for any of the three applications for the extension?
We've been through this several times and it's moving right along. I know, and it's certainly, I'll make a motion to approve application 2009-0027-664 Scenic Road for a six-month extension of their special exemption, special exception that was granted.
That was which one?
20027.
Okay.
To allow the multifamily in the SFR zone.
They've met all the criteria set forth?
Yeah, no substantial changes.
So, we have a motion?
A second.
We have a second discussion. There being none, all those in favor?
Right.
A motion for 0029?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for extension for application 2009-0029-63699 Fletcher Lane for the lodges at Meredith Bay, extension for the special exception to allow multifamily and single-family residential. The applicant has met all the requirements set forth and the extension would go to July 16, 2018? I'll second that.
Now, I got a question. Do we give them the exact day?
Except that we just say July.
Or until the next?
Just the six-month extension.
A six-month, okay.
Six-month extension.
I withdraw that. Just a six-month extension.
Because if that exact day doesn't coincide with our meeting, then it could create a a foobag. Unnecessary. Okay, so we have a motion?
I have a second.
And a second. Discussion, there being none, all those in favor?
Right.
Boom. That one passes. And 0030?
I'll make a motion to approve application 2009-0030, which was an area variance to allow for height, the height of the structures to exceed 35-foot limit. So it's a six-month extension.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, we got a second. Discussion, there being none, all those in favor?
Right.
Okay, it passes 5-0. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
See you in six.
See you in July.
Okay. And we're now going to move into public hearings. The first one is application Z-02017, I guess it's Z-O.
Yeah, Z-O.
Dash 0026-21 Morris Avenue. Request for a variance to build, to build, finish the second floor within the setbacks. The applicant here, please come forward. Explain to us how we might help you.
Yes, good evening, everybody. My name's Lorenzo Trombetta. I'm here to represent James and Pam Cott, as they're at their home in Florida right now. The proposed project is approximately 326 square feet. We'll be building up over the existing kitchen and bath area that's there now, so we'll be going up. The main reason is to create a full bathroom. What's there now is a very small three-quarter bath. At any given time during the summer months when they're here and their whole family does come up, there could be 13 people there. So, having just that one small bathroom is a challenge. Also, we would be adding a bedroom. And again, when everybody's there, you know, the bedroom quarters are limited also. So, again, it would be helping out with that. I do have some pictures that I've taken. I think she submitted the application, so it might be limited to what she gave you.
Yes, you may. And we will retain possession of them and they will be turned over to the planning department.
This is a little layout of the whole project and here's some pictures of where the building So it shouldn't impact any, you know, we're not going out any further than what's there already. We're just going up.
It's actually, it's this one, this is a paper strip, so actually the line.
Anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer as well. You can see in the picture that there's a two-foot overhang, cantilever, so we would be going to that up above as well.
Cantilever for the rest of the front of it and along is this front side over this door.
Correct.
Is there a reason you're going all the way to the edge? I'm assuming that's the edge you're talking about?
Yeah, now we, now that little overhang there, that will come off. We're only going to go to where that wall is.
Right here.
Right there, correct. That's as far as it'll go on that side.
Okay.
That little overhang would actually come off. Well, that whole roof would come off of there, of course, so.
So it follows the building that exists.
Exactly, exactly.
Any other questions at the moment?
Pretty straightforward.
With that, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Please come forward.
My name is Robert Regan. I'm 84 years old. I own the property at 15 Maristapp. That would have a great impact on my property, value-wise. I have a porch that goes along the side of my house and on the front that faces the lake and that would be all blocked out. The picture window in the parlor, that would be blocked out from looking to the lake. That's the reason we bought the place because my wife loved it because it was not on the water and I had small children and she could watch them and we could still see the view of the lake and the mountains. And that would block off the two bedrooms upstairs, the view from the bedrooms upstairs that you can't see the lake anymore. And what else now? And then I was talking to a fella that owns the cottage on the waterfront, two cottages away from that cottage, and he informed me that they bought that on a short sale to settle an estate and they were going to supersize it, supersize the building and sell it and flip it. And, flip it, and then they, and that's the reason I'm against it because it would, I would lose the value of my property for putting that up. And at one time I went down about 20 years ago to get the roof done and I went down to City Hall here to get the information, what I had to do, they gave me all the information. And then they, I think it was Mr. Huff, but I might be wrong, and he informed me that it was grandfathered in in that area that you couldn't put any additions onto the buildings at all. There had to be the original buildings, that I only could do the roof, that you could do nothing, add nothing to it but fix any of the property that was there. And then he said the reasoning for that was the cottages are all on top of one another. You can put your hand out and touch the cottage next door, some of the roofs almost hit each other. The parking, most of the cottages only have parking for one car. And he said the street, the streets are narrow, they're only about six feet wide off Centenary. Actually, with my car now, you've got to push the mirrors in so you don't knock them off. And there's only one fire hydrant up in Centenary Ave that's right up with the wooden bridges where the entrance to the old Methodist Center was, that's three streets away. And then he said that the fire level in that area, because of all the wooden buildings and how close they were, were very high. And that I understood very well because I'm a retired police officer, of rank, and I, on my district, I responded to many fires. And the area that I had was in the south end and the back bay. And I responded to fires and death. So that I understood very well. So that's my complaint against putting that addition on there because it would devaluate my property and I do not want it.
Okay. If I may ask, you indicated that it was told to you that it was grandfathered in, that there's no build-owns to these buildings. Is that a deed restriction or is that?
That's what they informed me. I came here, one of the city officials, I went to one of the offices and that's what they informed me.
Do we have anything, knowledge of that whatsoever or is?
I don't have any direct knowledge of that conversation. It was sometime, sometime ago. In general, what Mr. Regan is stating is, is, is correct. In order to, you know, he went down to do his roof and you can do repairs and maintenance, but you can't increase the size of any of those structures down there without getting a variance. And that's the part that maybe he did not quite understand or maybe was not explained to him. But obviously with a variance, you can do whatever the board is willing to grant. But as you know, that neighborhood, virtually every structure is, is non-conforming and would need a variance to do anything other than just maintenance.
And I've owned that property for 50 years.
So the view that would be obstructed is not from your downstairs? Your, the view obstructed would just be from the bedrooms upstairs?
No, I'd be instructed from, I get a porch that goes along the side of the house and then it comes around, it swings around the front.
Right, but this, but this addition is on the second floor of the, of the next house. It's way up. So how would that affect your view down below?
Well, I don't know. They're putting the addition on. That would block the, I get big windows up in the bedrooms upstairs to view the lake.
Okay, so it would be from your upstairs that you would lose your view?
Right.
Not from your downstairs?
Well, it's part of the, yeah, part of the, on the right side of the, because of the, the porch swings around to the right. It goes all along the front of my house that faces the lake.
Right, but this.
So this part of it, you couldn't see.
But the, but the building footprint doesn't change.
The buildings are, they're almost, you can almost touch each building there.
I know, but the building, what's being proposed doesn't change the footprint of the building, so what you.
I think he's, he's talking about the height. And the other, the other question that I had, unless you have in your deed for the property, unless you have a deeded view easement, block, because somebody adds something on that blocks your view, unless you have a deeded view easement prohibiting it, that's not something that.
Excuse me, sir. Do you pay a view tax?
Huh?
Do you pay a view tax?
I think I do, but I'm not sure.
We don't have that in the state.
I think I do.
Oh, yes, we do. I've never heard of that.
I used to have it assessed against me.
I'm not aware of a view tax either.
I don't know if the assessor's office does some type of adjustment.
You lost the view.
Yes. Go ahead.
That land where your, your house is located and where the, the house in front of you is located, that's a pretty steep grade there, isn't it?
No, it's kind of level.
All the way up to Centenary Ave?
No, no, when you, you mean Maristapp?
Yeah.
Yeah, Maristapp, where you are, and the house in front of you.
Yeah, we're kind of level.
Yeah, it's not a steep grade.
Because after my, after that little easement that's on the back or the other side of the garage, then the hill starts to go up.
Yeah. I tried to drive down there.
No, I was up the side.
It's impossible. It's impossible.
In the wintertime, beautiful.
Yeah.
We had other applications in this area and it's just a.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. That record indicate no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I'm going to close it out to the public and bring it back to the board for any further questions of the applicant.
Mr. Chairman? I'm sure, does everybody have a picture of the property card? You see, it shows his property there and as he stated, going up, yeah, I'll submit that to you. By going up, it doesn't really appear that it should block his view. Any more than what's, what's there now.
Right there. This must be the other guy's house.
Yes, if you see in this picture, that's a four. So going up here, it doesn't really.
House in front of us, I think.
The gutters here. The applicant was right here.
They are pretty tight there.
This is his.
Oh, have you ever been up there?
So if they put something around, that's what he's talking about, but it really doesn't seem, but even so.
You can see it clear here.
Yeah, it's right there.
All right, we'll save that for discussion. If we might. Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
And the roof, the top roof line is going to match the existing roof line?
Correct. Well, the height will be the same, but it's going to be more of a peak in the middle. You know what I mean? That's, that's almost like a salt box look there. This one will come, and I don't have a drawing of it, but the peak would be in the middle. If that is an issue, we could keep that same roof line.
But how are you going to reconcile that with the roof line that exists?
Well, that's, that would actually make it easier. Instead of trying to match in, it would, it would offset it some so you'd have like a little cheek there so you don't have to worry about being exact.
So the two roofs won't necessarily be married together?
Correct.
They'll stand alone as their own supportive?
Well, no, 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 they'll, they'll be, they'll, they'll connect.
Right.
But they won't be exactly at the same plane.
One could have a steeper angle, the addition would have a steeper.
What's the, the pitch?
Pitch, then.
But the highest point of the addition will be no higher than the roof that exists.
Right.
Is that correct?
So what will that pitch be of that roof, the new roof?
The pitch?
Yes.
Honestly, I gotta be honest, I haven't calculated that, but it actually probably wouldn't be as steep mainly because on that side where you showed me where the other building is very close, that wall is only about four feet and I'll be going up eight feet there on that side. So the pitch, and I think that's like the south side of the building, it'll be, it'll be different than what's there now.
Well, you would have to make that pitch so it doesn't dump the water on the side of the other building.
Oh, right. Of cour, well, it would run straight off and down anyway, sure. Yes.
Is there going to be drainage, gutters or something added into there between those two houses so it doesn't add more? Because currently the way the flat roof is, it would channel the water away from that center. it would channel the water away from that center. And, and what you'd be doing now is one half of that whole roof is going to channel more water. So is there?
Yeah, we could, I mean, gutters are easy enough to install, sure.
And how do you handle the water after the gutter? Is it just going?
Yeah.
That's, you know, that, as close to the water as it is there would be a consideration of what happens to the out, off flow of the water.
Right. I do see they have a gutter here already on, on the side where that deck is.
Question?
Yes.
The wall, the, the, the butter said that he's going to lose the sight of the lake. If you're just moving a wall back and you're not creating a larger wall, how is that going to alter his view of the lake? It looks to me like he hasn't got a view of the lake now.
Going up, it doesn't go that bad.
I guess this is upstairs.
It's upstairs.
But that's a moot point. View is a moot point, because view is not, unless it's a deeded easement, a deeded view easement. It's not, it's not something, I mean, we've, we've had issues like this before, where butters have come in protesting that they're going to lose their view. And it's not a valid reason for us to deny the application.
Yeah, we did it Aquaman Arena, that was a big one.
Well, we did it down on Daisy Corner.
And we did it down on-
Daisy Road.
Uh, it was on-
In that same neighborhood?
Make sure, yeah, in that same neighborhood. They were building something right in front of the, yeah.
The other ones. Okay, any other questions?
Might issue with the water drainage is more.
Well, you're going to have a water drainage in that neighborhood is going to-
It's better, you know, once you start changing things around, it's the time to start looking at, you know, if it is just going to be a channel in between two buildings and you're going to have inflow of water that comes off the roof and go into the basements.
Right. That's why you're going to need to have something there.
And not just sheet flow into the lake.
Yeah.
Rain garden.
Yeah.
Some sort of check before, or unless it goes into any sort of public drainage that would happen.
Well, you can't do that either, because that's adding to our sewage.
And that's outside.
Excuse me, sir. Now, remember that, I'm putting a roof over a roof that's there. We're taking that one off. So the impervious area isn't going to change.
No, but it's where the water goes to, because you'd be concentrating it in between the two buildings now.
You'll have half the house dumping all, half of the water right in between the two buildings.
But it's, the roof that's there now, if you notice, it goes there already. This is kind of like, it's a peaked roof there.
Right.
So the only thing that's going to change is-
Nothing gutters off the front side of that where your thumb is on that wall?
Because it's like a hip roof. It comes down and it goes this way as well. See what I'm saying? It's, it's like a three, it's a hip roof there. So we're going to rip that off, of course, and just put a peaked roof. And that's what I was saying as well, too. Here, this wall will come higher, because this is only four feet. Of course, we're going to make a bathroom on that side, so I've got to have a full wall. So that'll come up.
That will come up, is that going to change?
This, this will stay the same, but this will come up, and then the peak would be in this area. See what I'm saying?
So that, on that backside, will actually be higher than that existing roof that's there right now? What's good need?
Right here it will be, yes. On this side, because this is going to come up. So this will come up, come to this point, and then back down to here.
On a lot of options.
I think what I would like to do is, I think I need some more definitive plans on that roof, because I am, as I sit and listen and talk more and think about it, that's going to create other issues. And I want to make sure we understand all the issues that, that drainage from a roof, because I didn't know the wall was going to come up even higher than the first roof and then come out like that. Okay, my impression was that the two roof lines were going to line up with the peaks, and you were going to come like that. Okay, now this is, so what I would really like to do is, and I'm going to make a motion, that we put this on for the next meeting and give you time to give us some drawings, showing you pitches and showing us exactly what this is going to look like, okay?
Sounds good.
Because I have some concerns, and I'm sure my fellow board members have some concerns. And I would talk to the owner and look at that closely about the drainage, because I'm, I kind of feel assured that there's going to be some drainage questions about the roof. So I'll give you that ahead of time, so that you would be, it would not be a surprise.
Absolutely. I'm pretty sure, too, on, there is already a gutter on this, this part of the house that goes down into something, and maybe we would have to tie into that or whatever, but sure.
It'd be nice to know what the something is.
Yes.
You know, the fifty-five gallon drum full of crushed stone isn't necessarily the best idea.
Sure.
So.
And in that area.
Okay, I make a motion to table this, or continue this.
Continue.
Can, okay, continue this to the next meeting. And we've made requests of further information, drawings and whatnot of the roof line for that house that is being proposed.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And if, before I move to the next one, if you wanted to show that to these guys prior to the meeting, and they're going to, they'll, you know, make sure he's kind of in the right direction, understanding what we're looking for, so they'll let you know that, okay?
At the next meeting.
February twenty eighth.
Excuse me. Charge of the other individual made about no outside construction or changes on the building. So we've got to look into that.
There is nothing based on what planning has said, other than the fact that you can't do any additions in that area without a variance.
It could be a part of a condominium association. There's an association there.
But the, the Camp Meeting Association doesn't have that kind of-
Structure.
That kind of prohibition. I mean, they're, that started in the late eighteen nineties, and it's, some of those revision, uh, conditions are so-
The only restrictions on increasing structures in that area are our zoning ordinances.
Nothing grandfathered.
No, nothing of record, anyway.
Right.
Okay, so we're going to-
Excuse me, Chairman, what's the date of the next meeting?
Twentieth.
Twentieth.
February twentieth.
February twentieth.
Twentieth, okay, thank you. That's a Tuesday night.
Okay. The next application is Z O two zero one seven dash zero zero two eight, one four five Daisy Gardner Road. And I understand that we are going to be moving, that's the one we're going to move to the March meeting?
Correct.
March?
Yes.
Is it March?
To the March meeting. And everybody's in agreement with that. So anybody here to listen to that one, it will be heard in March. And I'd like to thank the applicant in helping us with that. The next application is application Z zero two zero one seven dash zero zero three two, Mountain Lake Village variance.
And before we-
We have one person that's going to recuse themselves, because they are-
Clients of the firm.
Okay, so you may, and the alternate, you will be happy to join us tonight in voting and reviewing that. Are you comfortable with doing that?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, I'm Attorney Phil Brouillard here for Mountain Lake Village. I'm here today to request the same variance that this board granted back in July of two thousand thirteen. It's a variance for a cul-de-sac in excess of a thousand feet. The reason for this variance is that the Laconia Cluster Ordinance changed. And when it did so, all the lots that you see in orange on that plan got deleted, because they didn't meet the criteria for the, under the new cluster ordinance. If you look at your materials, there's a, there's a smaller plan here that shows the revised cluster subdivision. Mr. Foot was also on the Conservation Commission, and we showed them this new plan, which reduces the amount of lots by about twenty-two from the whole seventy-seven lot subdivision to now fifty-five. So the redesign that you have in your materials sheds about twenty-two lots. The other thing that I think the board should know is this project was also tied into the Apple Ridge Apartments that Mr. Agnos built. And I had originally had ownership in both parcels. And I put a, there was an omnibus wetlands permit that covers impacts on that apartment project that's mitigated by this property. And basically, this property is, is really a, a little gem designed under the new cluster ordinance, where every single lot backs up to common land, every, every one. And in fact, out of the hundred and seven acres, I've already deeded about fifty-two acres to the Town of Belmont Conservation Commission. So the only thing that's actually, the eighteen lots in Belmont that you see, that's below that black line there. Those are approved. But all that land surrounding them is owned by the Conservation Commission. And, and also, the, those lots in Belmont are part of the Laconia land now by virtue of a boundary line agreement. So basically, the reason that we need the cul-de-sac is to take into account and use the engineering that we've already spent as far as sidewalks, water, sewer, underground utilities, and also the permit we've already obtained. And, but what we're going to lose is we're going to lose those lots that go along the bypass there, which means that basically, these lots will be, you won't be able to even know that the subdivision is there. In other words, you've got to drive in either way quite a distance to even come to the first lot. So it's a pretty exciting project. And we need a variance for the road length. And basically, for your ease, I put the black circle where the cul-de-sac is going to be, if you want to triangulate that to the plans that you have for the revised subdivision. The, I can stand corrected by Mr. Foot, but the plant, the Conservation Commission really liked this plan. There's a lot of sleep, steep slopes, and there's a lot of ravines, and there's a hundred-foot wide public service easement that runs through the property. And this does a great job preserving all those natural features and so forth and so on. So unless you have any questions about that presentation, I would go ahead with the variance criteria, unless you've got some questions.
I'm just curious, it, it, this was the exact same variance we already gave? I mean, why do they need another variance? I'm confused.
It's, it's expired.
Oh, the variance expired.
It's the same, it's the same exact one. But we're, we're now going forward and finishing the project. And so when we, we went to the planning department, they told us that the first thing we needed to do was to get this variance reinstated.
But the variance, the specifics of the variance that were granted are the exact same conditions that exist today?
Yes.
Essentially.
So-
Minus some of the, today it's minus some structures versus what was granted before, right?
No, no, not really. This is exactly, I did that just to show you what was gone. But the, the, the plan that you have before you was the same plan I presented in two thousand thirteen. In other words, the same, you're looking at the same thing that you looked at in two thousand thirteen, the exact same thing.
And so the variance that we granted could still be just reissued? Or do we have to go through the whole thing again?
Because it's expired, it, it's essentially, it didn't exist. It hasn't, it doesn't exist, so you need to, you need to go through. You've got to, he's starting square one.
But it is the exact same variance. The, this is, this is the zoning criteria. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Granting this variance would not be contrary to the public interest, and granting the requested variance will provide a benefit to the general pub, public. The proposed cluster plan preserves fifty percent of the land area of the cluster subdivision, including over seventeen acres in Laconia and over seventy acres of a hundred acres overall in Belmont and Laconia. The proposed plan encourages environmentally sound development of land by preserving steep slopes, wetlands, and preserves open space to protect natural resources to create attractive living environments. By providing sprinklers to all houses in Laconia, the main reason for the cul-de-sac length limit is addressed. There is also city water and hydrants along the road. By allowing this variance, the houses are located at least four hundred feet from the Laconia bypass right of way, and the houses will hardly be visible from the bypass, preserving this scenic wooded corridor along the bypass. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the cluster development encourages environmentally sound development of land to preserve open spaces and to preserve natural resources. By allowing this variance and sprinkling the houses, the plan preserves usable contiguous open space, tree cover, scenic vistas, and keeps the houses to be built over four hundred feet from the bypass, making them hardly visible. Fire protection concerns about the length of the road are addressed by sprinkling the houses and providing fire hydrants along the road serviced by the Laconia Water Works. Substantial justice is done, because the primary reason for the restriction on the length of the road to a cul-de-sac is fire protection and life safety, which is addressed by sprinkling the houses and providing fire hydrants along the road along with municipal water supply. Perhaps the only guiding rule as far as substantial justice is concerned is that any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by the gain to the general public is an injustice. In this case, there is no harm to any abutter. There is no evidence that this variance will harm any land, wetland, aquifer. And granting the variance encourages the permitted use of single-family residential housing by means of an environmentally sound, innovative cluster subdivision plan that preserves open space, steep slopes, and wetlands, which is allowed in the RS zone. To deny this variance and force applicant to redesign the planned road, drainage, and be forced to abandon existing engineering, wetland, and site-specific permits would be a huge loss and injustice to the applicant, which is not justified and necessary, since the plan meets all the other requirements of the cluster subdivision ordinance. The value of surround- The value of surrounding properties are not diminished. The proposed use is single-family residential, which is in allowed use in the IRS zone and is in keeping with the neighborhood. It is extremely doubtful that the new homes proposed by the cluster plan would be visible from the existing houses in the neighborhood. The proposed road would locate the new houses further away from the abutters, and the bypass would isolate the new houses to be built from the existing houses and back up the new houses to undeveloped open space, land, and woods. The new houses to be built according to the proposed cluster plan for which a variance is sought will hardly be visible from Mile Hill Road and will not be visible from the Laconia bypass because of the open, extensive, open space buffer created by the road length variance for this cluster subdivision. Literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. The road length specified in the cluster ordinance is driven by fire protection concerns. There is no other reason for this limitation, which is addressed by sprinkling the houses and fire hydrants with municipal water supply. The length for the road for which the variance is sought is necessary to meet the other criteria of the zoning ordinance, to preserve large amounts of open space, and because the property has 100-foot right, public service right-of-way for transmission lines. Ravines, wetlands, steep slopes, and the road is necessary... So, in other words, it preserves transmission lines, ravines, wetlands, steep slopes. And the road itself is necessary to access the developable land areas. Applicant has agreed to sprinkle all houses to be built in Laconia, which addresses the life, safety, and fire protection reason for the road length limit. Thus, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to applicant's property. The proposed use is a reasonable use. The new homes to be built according to the proposed cluster plan for which a variance is sought will hardly be visible from Mile Hill Road and the Laconia bypass because of the extensive open space buffer created by allowing the road length variance. The cluster ordinance is a reasonable method to developing this parcel of land because it preserves open spaces, protects natural resources, and creates attractive living environments. By allowing this variance and sprinkling the houses, the cluster plan preserves usable contiguous open space, tree cover, scenic vistas, ravine, wetlands, and steep slopes, as well as incorporating 100-foot wide public service electricity transmission line into an attractive cluster subdivision. And I've also attached a copy of the notice of action that this board granted before on September 16, 2013. And depending... Pretty much what I just read to you is in this variance. So, in the event, I'd be privileged to have a... An approval here. I think you could almost make a motion to just change the dates on this particular notice of action, and you wouldn't have to read everything I just read. If there's any questions, if there's anything else I can answer, I'd be happy to do that. This is... This project, the economy and the demand for housing is finally catching up to taking care and finishing this project. We're very excited about it. We appreciate your help, and we think it's a really good plan. It's been approved by this board before, and we ask your consideration to approve it again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any questions of the applicant?
I do. Could you please, Mr. Bruyard, refresh my memory here, 'cause I just... I guess I don't know. Now, with these roads, when you say it's a public water supply, is that a city of Laconia water supply that's driving those sprinklers?
Yes, it is. It comes in right here. This is in those new apartments, Mike?
Right.
And then, the Briarcrest tank is up here, and it supplies Briarcrest. Then, it comes down through the apartment land, and it's right across the street here at the street. So, we got high-pressure water.
Perfect.
Tons of it.
Are those... Are the streets a part of the association or the development? Or are those a public street?
Well, they're going to be eventually public streets. But you've gotta build them all up, and you've gotta go through the approval process with the city to get them accepted as town... As city streets. They're all gonna be built to city street standards. And Belmont standards are just a little different. Laconias are a little more heavy-duty, so they're... All this road, even in Belmont, is being built to Laconia standards, which are more than Belmont. A little bit more, not much.
Thank you. Any other questions? At this time, I'd go ahead and like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate, no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. I'll bring it back to the board for any last questions.
Be straightforward.
Any closing comments?
Thank you for your time, all of you.
With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
I don't have any issues with it.
We've done all this once before.
Yeah, I thought it was well thought out the first time and discussed. I think the safety issues were addressed.
With the sprinkler systems and the houses and stuff like that, I think that's an added bonus to the development, and it is a positive going for that. So, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve application 2017-0032, Mountain Lake Village, the variance for the 1,000-foot for the road length to exceed 1,000 feet. With the board's indulgence, I'd like to, instead of trying to recreate the wheel, the variance criteria are very well spelled out here, and everything he went through. If we could just use that language, the language that he submitted this time to meet all the criteria, and that would be the motion that we go forward with. Board agrees?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion, yes. So, that would be basically based off the notice of action from...
No, I'd like to use the... What he submitted this time.
Yeah.
Okay.
The new language.
The new language. Okay. I'm just clarifying which...
Which he just read to us.
Which is the old language.
Which is the old language, but still, we're gonna update it, and it's now the new language. Okay.
So, for the record, it's the new language, okay? All right. Any other discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor? Okay, it passes?
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. The next application is application 2017-0033, 64 Manfield Court. Request for a variance to build a deck within the rear setback. Would the applicant... Please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we can help.
I am Louise Scanlon. I own 64 Manfield Court in Laconia in the Briarcrest Estates. And...
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, could you put the mic a little closer? Thank you.
Did you want me to repeat that? Did you want me to repeat?
I'm not hearing anything.
I am Louise Scanlon, 64 Manfield Court in Laconia, Briarcrest Estates. I'm the owner of property. I'm requesting a variance because the deck that I want to replace my back egress door porch width is slightly over the line.
Excuse me, just for a second.
Ori, are you?
I'm staying out because I'm on the board of Lakefront Quatton, which is Briarcrest Estates. And I don't know if that creates...
It's good, just...
This has been accepted by the board on...
Well, it was conditionally accepted by the board.
For with a permit?
Provided that you got the permit and the board was aware of the issues. So, anyway, if you want...
If you feel comfortable recusing yourself for that, that's fine.
I'm happy to do whatever the board wishes.
I don't see a reason. We all serve on different boards and different things, so...
Yeah, okay. Give her a second to come back. Yep, I just did not...
Nope, you're good. Please continue. Thank you for your patience.
Do you have a particular question?
Can you outline your project for us, please?
Our back exit porch for the back door was rotten, and we had to take it down. So, it seemed logical to make something that would be a little bigger, that we could put a small table and a couple of chairs on, because we have no porch anywhere on the property. And almost all the other homes, I believe, do have some place where you can sit outside. We do have a very nice backyard that includes the abutters' property in terms of view. And we can't really enjoy it because it's very uneven, and it has a lot of roots that come up that we can trip over. And my husband has a very difficult time walking. He has peripheral neuropathy, which destroys the nerves in your legs and your arms peripheral. And he also is dementured and has other medical problems. And I was thinking of this porch as a place where I could get him out more, someplace where he would be comfortable and be able to sit. So, I wanted it a little larger than the one that we were replacing. We started building it, and I gave the information to the board that we were building this. And that's... And they requested a permit. I assumed there was not gonna be any problem because there was a stone wall. And I live in New England, I assumed, which was stupid of me, assumed the stone wall was the border of the property, because the stone wall going across the other side of the house is the border of the property. Well, when I went down for the permit, they said that it was going over the... It was not within, you know, 25 feet from the border. And that's when I found out that that wall is not the border, that the border is actually closer to my house. Now, the complication is how far the porch will be from the border. And the problem is, the border does not parallel the house. So, my house... The back of my house would be like this, and the border goes like this. So, if you measure from this side of the back of the house to here, you're gonna end up with a couple of feet over the border. But my deck is going over here. And when I... I got a friend of mine who is a civil engineer, and he helped me find the markers for the border on either side. And we ran a string. This is... So, this is gonna be approximate, not exact. But from the part of the... The deck would be like on this end of the house in the back. And the border is going like this, so that if you measure from the back there, I get over 25 feet. The other side of the deck would be... It was like three or four inches over when I measured it, and that's not exact measurements. But this deck would mean an awful lot to my husband and I. It would improve the property. And by improving our property, we're improving the property of everybody around us. If none of my abutters had any objection, and we notified everyone who abutted Briarcrest, I would appreciate consideration of acceptance of the variance.
There's a 25-foot rear setback?
When Briarcrest was approved, when it was first approved in 85, 86, it was approved with the condition there would be a 25-foot setback from every building, from every boundary, every border, and a 25-foot setback between buildings on the lots, as they're construed. But 25... 25 feet between every building and 25 feet from a boundary line. And the way this was initially presented was a 12... 10 by 12 deck. Her house sits, if you scale it out using the tax map and some of the plans, her house is actually 31 feet from the line. So, a 10 by 12-foot deck actually extends four feet into the setback.
So, it's four feet, that was my question.
So, it's... And if the line does... If the line does move as it does in some cases, because it's a diagonal behind my house as well. And yes, you do get fooled by the stone walls, because I have a stone wall right behind my house.
I was so surprised, really.
And you think that that's the line, but it's not.
Yeah.
The boundary line is actually probably about 20 feet behind that stone wall.
Quite a few feet. It's kind of like halfway between my house and the wall.
So, that was how it was originally presented. And I had questioned at the meeting, what we said, we thought we needed a building permit, first of all. So, we required... Gave a conditional approval with the...
Permit.
With the permit, with the obtaining of a permit. And I had questioned whether it was going to interfere or impinge on the setback.
Encroach.
So, that encroach on that setback. So, that's where that 25-foot back line, borderline setback comes from, is from the original approvals for Briarcrest Estates. And I didn't bring all of that material with me, but...
So, the setback is the Briarcrest setback and not a city setback?
It is. It's an RR1 zone, so it's a 25-foot setback.
Yeah, all right, okay.
It's really due to the GPS coordinates of where it shows on the tax map.
Yeah.
Which has a variance, you know, plus or minus so much, so not much it really goes over, so...
And it is... It's a very wooded area. She's at the end of the cul-de-sac. It's really secluded, really only one abutter impacted at all, and...
The owner, in the summertime, the owner can't even see.
Yeah, you can't. It's so wooded, yeah. Which is why we really had given the conditional approval.
So, this is over the line of the setback, not over the line of the property?
Not over the boundary line, just intrudes into the setback. Yep.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be the first thing in Briarcrest that... We had... The board saw an application for a variance from the building setback for someone to build a garage, and actually gave them eight feet, because it's supposed to be 25 feet, and the garage reduced that to 17, so...
Okay. Any other questions, applicant, at this time? With that, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate, no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. I'll bring it back to the board for any further questions.
I do, if I can jump in here. Now, your husband, how is his mobility? Is he able to get up and down steps, or would you require a ramp?
We're going to put steps in with railings, just three little steps. It's not gonna be very high. For now, he can do that if he's very careful. He walks with walking sticks now. The prognosis, it just depends how the disease progresses. He could end up in a wheelchair, and we would have to replace it with a ramp. But he has other issues that may take him before.
Yep.
So, the steps are gonna be built on the west side, as recommended by your notice of decision?
They're going to be built between my home and the next Briarcrest home, not towards the... What do you call it, easement?
Setback.
Talking about the setback?
Setback.
Talking about the setback? And I think probably to either side, she's probably got enough room.
Well, this was specific in that decision.
Yes.
So, trying to honor this decision that was set forth by the board, the governing board... Governing board.
We were making sure that there would be setback between the buildings would be
Right, but I guess the point is, can we make this notice of decision part of our decision?
Except that, I would just add that our language was conditional on her receiving a city building.
No, we're going to, if we give the variance. But I'm just going to
So it's just basically saying it can be located on the east or west. But yes, we can make that it's also following the guidance from the
Board of Directors.
Right.
Board of Directors. Okay, if there's no further questions?
The only other comment that she made that just about everybody has a deck of some manner at Briarcrest, it's true. Just, just about everyone does.
That would be part of the discussion. Any other questions, Michael?
And I'm looking at this compass rose here. And is this space here to the north to this Manfield Road here, or does that?
This is Manfield Court, her house. It's hard to see in this.
I might have a drawing.
The house is here. This is the driveway for it.
Okay.
Manfield Court and then the, the line is here. Comes back and goes out like that.
I have an understanding of that, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Any closing comments, ma'am?
No, thank you. I'm just very grateful for your time, however it goes.
Okay. I'm going to close it to the public. You may have a seat. We'll bring it to the board for discussion. Discussion?
I'm not seeing any red flags here at all. Seems to be fairly straightforward. It's nice to have a spot to get out to.
Yes.
Yeah, I do. I think it's a, it's a very reasonable, very reasonable request, reasonable use.
Okay. No further discussion?
So I'd like to make a motion to accept application number 202017003. That's three.
Yep.
For Louise Ginnland, 64 Manfield Court Prior Press Estates. This setback, this request was for 10 by 12 addition of the house. The width of it being 12 feet, the depth is 10 feet into it. If this impinges upon a 25-foot setback as required by the city ordinances in the RR1 district. This would be the, what we're, the variance is requested for. The variance is not contrary to the public interest. The spirit of the ordinance is observed, subjuncts in that consideration is taken. Discussion's been made, substantial justice is done as it improves the living quarters and comfort of these people as it is. It should not value the, diminish the value of the surrounding properties. And the hardship being that I'm sure the porch needs to be replaced anyway, so we'd have a better egress. You need safety out the back for fire protection.
And, and do we just make the one condition that we attach the approval from the condominium association?
And attach?
Cooperative, the cooperative. Yeah, attach the, from the operations manager dated October 30, 2017.
And I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
You're done.
Thank you very much. You can't imagine how this will improve the quality of life.
Sure it will, as little as it is. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, before we go to the next one. I'm a member of the church. This is going to be fascinating.
I don't think that's a conflict of interest to you.
That's a problem. I'll step aside.
I don't see being a member of a church as a problem. You don't stand to gain financially from any of this. So. Maybe spiritually, but financially, I don't think spiritually is grounds to recuse oneself, so. Okay. Application 2017-0034291 Union Ave. Request for special exception for the use of the partial for school. Would the applicant please come forward and introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we may help you?
Thank you. My name is Fred Matasuski. I'm with CMK Architects. I've been retained by the Diocese of Manchester to represent the client. The Roman Catholic Bishop of Manchester Corporation Soul. Representing, also representing the diocese, we have Robert Ibe here. Who is a project manager with a real estate division. And then we also have Father Mark Druin, the pastor of St. Andre Basset. So, a bit of history or a bit of background, as noted within the application. Is that the two parishes of Sacred Heart and St. Joseph's are undergoing a consolidation. And toward that end, will be locating or relocating eventually all the facilities to 291 Union Ave. And that includes the relocation of the Holy Trinity School. Hence this application. The property, 6.71 acres, is, lies wholly within the commercial zone. It presently consists of four parcels. And running parallel with this is a voluntary merger or consolidation of those four parcels into a single parcel. Adjacent, immediately adjacent to the east and just to the south, over one half of the perimeter of the property is a residential zone. And we have private homes bordering that. So, we are applying for a special exception for the relocation of the school in the convent building, which is in the center of the property. School is small, about 100 students. And will nominally impact the use of the property. And I can go through the arguments once again a little later here. We are also applying to the planning department for a site plan review and for a conditional use permit. We have 147 parking spaces on the property. And when we calculate the combined uses of the property. The church, the office building that the church recently purchased, the former bank building to be used for parish offices. And the parish center, which is a combination of meeting rooms as well as a gymnasium. And the convent to be converted to an elementary school. We will require 276 parking spaces as a total. However, with scheduling, at no time will the parking lot ever really be full because we'll be trading off and sharing those. Now, that will be taken up with the planning board in the upcoming meetings. That essentially is the presentation. I'd be more than happy to go through the arguments that we are stating now or later. What is the board's pleasure?
For the parking, or?
Parking's not part of our review tonight, though, is it?
Excuse me, the general description as well as the criteria for special exception, I'd be happy to go through that now or later. What is the board's pleasure?
But the question I have is, to approve the use, the use has to be currently being available for all the use. And if it doesn't meet the parking by granting that use, aren't we in violation of our own?
He's applying for a conditional use permit for the parking at the planning board level.
Well, if he doesn't get that, then
He would need a variance.
We are creating a situation that is against us to be able to create. You see what I'm saying?
Uh huh. If you were to, if you grant the special exception. You could make it conditional on them
Condition of them getting the approval of the parking.
Board level, yes. I would advise you to do that.
Yes. Okay, we, I just want to make sure we're standing on solid ground when we make decisions here.
Exactly. If you wish, I'd be more than happy to go through the criteria for the special exception.
They were well presented.
They were really well presented.
I'm sorry?
I said, I thought they were well presented in your narrative, so I reviewed them. Anybody else wants to go through them?
I don't particularly think it needs to read them to us. I thought, I thought it was a very well-presented application.
Does the public stand to gain from?
Possibly. Because I can't see
Yeah, that's true.
No, okay. Any questions of the applicant? There being none at the moment, I'm going to open it up to the public and ask if the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the, oh, we do have the public.
Yes, you do. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Robert Ibe, and I am the Director of Real Estate for the Diocese of Manchester. And I just want to make it known to the board that we do support the relocation of Holy Trinity School from its current building to the Sacred Heart campus. That will allow for, in our, my words, improved learning environment for the children. It will help to ensure the continuation of Catholic school education in the Lakes Region. As, as well as Catholic school education north of Concord. And it will serve to integrate the school within a vibrant parish community. So as I stand before you, I just want you to know that we do support the relocation of the school. And we do ask that you approve the special exception for the use of parcel for school. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anybody else that wished to come forward and speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. I therefore bring it back to the board for questions. You indicated the building right here, the L-shaped building, is where the school will be located, and what is that currently? The convent.
It's a convent, Sacred Heart convent, and it is presently used as, for some meeting space. It is a underused facility at this point.
If I may.
Father Mark Druin, I'm pastor of St. Andre Basset. It's actually the convent school building. The back part of the building, on the east side of the building, is the former Catholic school that had been in existence up until the, gosh, late 70s, early 80s. And it reconsolidated to the St. Joseph's campus at that point. And so there's eight classrooms that existed in that, and that's attached to the convent building.
And so the, and so the physical plant of the building really isn't going to change except for this one
The elevator shaft, correct.
Elevator shaft and that, so, so there's really no change in the site?
Correct.
There is no change in the site. We have mapped out lighting by example, and also in the presentation, I had noted the green space to the impervious space.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of the applicant? There being none, closing comments?
I believe we are finished unless you have other questions.
Nope, this is your last chance to speak.
Was that a question?
With that, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
I'm, I'm fine with it. Yeah, low impact and
And I think the fact that there used to be a school on site before, and I certainly remember that.
And again, it's reuse of an infill property that exists, so it's, it's constructive in that sense. And it's a needed service. I'd like to see the school continue.
Certainly, the building is underutilized now, so.
All right. No further discussion. Like to entertain a motion.
I will make the motion to approve application 201734291 Union Ave. The requested use is authorized in the chapter, the conversion by renovation. I'm going to just read their narrative because it's well stated. I couldn't say it any better than what they presented. To be used as an elementary school and preschool, kindergarten is allowed. It's an allowed use in the table of permitted uses. It will, the use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. Will add a nominal increase in vehicles accessing the property twice a day during the week, morning and afternoon. The estimated numbers of vehicles somewhere between 20 and 30, that's the school's full student population, is less than 100. Requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer, any other municipal system. Or will there be a significant increase in stormwater runoff? The conversion of the convent into an elementary school will result in a very negligible, negligible increase in water consumption as the school is designed for possibly heavy children. The facility will be equipped with an automatic fire suppression system, but the system is dormant unless called upon for an emergency. Very small addition of a stair tower and elevator to the building will be added. And that's approximately 600 square feet of additional roof area. There's no intention to alter the configuration of the site, the ratio of impervious to pervious area or as it presently exists. Requested use will not create excessive demand for municipal police, fire protection, schools, or solid waste. As a proposed facility, as a school for 100 students, it is not expected that there will be a demand for increased municipal police or fire protection or solid waste disposal. There are no special provisions as set forth in the chapter. And the requested use will not create hazards to the health, safety, or general welfare of the public or be out of character with the neighborhood. The addition of the elementary school to the site will not create hazards, as stated, to the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. The adjacent neighborhood is a combination of businesses and residential on the adjacent streets. So the proposed location is appropriate for the use. And the use is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and master plan. The introduction of an elementary school into a commercial zone is allowed by special exceptions and keeping it consistent with the spirit and intent of the master plan. And the one condition that we would add is that the parking situation be approved by the planning board.
CUP, additional use permit? So it would need a CUP from the planning board? For parking?
For parking, okay. We add a motion, do we get a second?
A whole second, sir.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion. All those in favor of the motion? It passes. Thank you. Okay. The other business. We have a request for a rehearing. The grounds for the rehearing. The rules are, we do not take any public input from anybody whatsoever. It is strictly discussion amongst the board. And with that. Anything else I need to cover for that? Anything else I need to cover for that before I start? Nope. Okay. Application or, or no, I want to say request, hearing request, uh, two zero one seven dash zero zero three zero. Big Island rehearing request. Okay, to the board, we've received a request for a rehearing. And as we went through the documents or at least as I have been through the documents, I do have one other thing. Mike? You will have to recuse yourself.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do I need to leave the table?
Please.
Okay.
Okay. The reason being is he was, uh, spoke on very occasions for this application and, and stuff. So in order to maintain that, he has to be on the other side of this. Okay? So. With that, we had, uh, looks like three different areas that were requested for the rehearing or the reason for rehearing. And. The board wish we can go through the three different areas or you just want to discuss among yourself? The first one was a request for a disqualification of Ms. Pearlie and, um.
Would I like the opportunity to address that?
Please.
I, um. Have been on this board for ten years. I always come to my meetings prepared. The accusation against me is that I prejudged the application. I, um. Just want to say that in the ten years I've been on this board, first of all, I think I've had to chair a meeting twice because the chairman is always here. So I got notice shortly before the meeting that I would be chairing the meeting, which is a lot of pressure on me. Due to other things going on in my life. Um, so, but beyond that, this isn't, wasn't a new application. It's an application that was before us for several months. We knew what was going on. This is an application that first came to light way back several years ago, so it, it wasn't anything new. So. We listened to hours of testimony. I made copious notes. It's what I do, okay? And anybody can look at my notepad here. I've got like ten pages of notes because I write down everything. That's what I do. I take notes. And, uh, yes, I referred to my notes at the end, um, but we, um, we had discussion. All four people on the board voted. Said, said they were against the application. And at that point, I made a motion, um, to deny the application because that was the rule of the board. So I think I did my job. And in, and this whole thing about me prejudging the application, I went back and read all the zoning criteria and the zoning law. And, you know, it clearly says that. Members can consider their own personal knowledge of the site and the factors and the surrounding uses. And, and the familiarity with the area involved. And I think that I tried to my best to address all the issues. Ninety-nine percent of the testimony, uh, my mouth is very dry from my medicine thing, sorry, was, is against this application. The neighborhood is against a commercial use on this island. Um, so.
We're just talking about the, the pre.
Okay, but I'm just trying to make my point. So for that reason, I don't think I need to recuse myself, but I would like the, the board members to make that decision.
I don't believe that Suzanne needs to recuse herself either. I think that when we come into any application, we've had a lot of time to read it. We've had a lot of time to consider it. And very often you come in with an idea of how you're going to look at the, look at the application anyway, especially after you've looked at the property. Spent time examining it. I always check other, I will check the online information if available. There are times where you come in with one thought and your mind changes in the course of the presentation.
That has happened to me a million times.
That has happened to me many, many times on this where I would come in with an application and think I'm going to vote, vote one way and I wind up voting another way. I don't think that just because, I, I do notes as well. When I'm preparing for the meeting and I read the applications, I may make notes just on the applications. I don't think that's a reason to disqualify you. Uh, your knowledge of the area hardly means you should disqualify yourself. It's been before us many times. If they're going to disqualify Suzanne. For having foreknowledge and preparing herself, then I think you need to disqualify just about everybody.
I feel the same. It's, it's, it's kind of interesting that someone would be asked to recuse themselves for doing their homework and doing what they've been tasked with to do.
For doing your job.
Is to find all the information that is available and, and, and using the public knowledge, the information. And, and helping you to formulate.
And, and attend any, yeah, and attend any other meetings held on it. I fail to see how that, uh, if anything, that makes you more qualified to judge on it.
Comment?
Yes.
I think Mrs. Pearlie conducted herself in exemplary fashion. I congratulated her after for being able to handle a very difficult situation. There were many people here who wanted to speak. Every person who wanted to speak was allowed to speak. I noticed a couple of days later in the newspaper, there was one person who felt that he hadn't been treated fairly. Well, I don't know who that person is. To this night, if he walked in front of me, I wouldn't know him. But I thought that every person in the room was treated fairly, uh, at that night and at both meetings that we had.
I agree with that.
To say that Mrs. Pearlie should recuse herself is something that I just will not go along with.
I, I, yeah, I agree there.
You know, I've served on this board for a bit now. And one of the things that I find about this and what makes it interesting for me is that there's all these factors which go into a decision. And it's really hard to sit on this board and be a one agenda person. There's so much that comes in front of it, so many different situations. And sure, with the experience here, as you come in, you know, like, well, how does this going to be for the community? How is this or that? And by the time you get to something, it can change. Everything here, and it comes from the people who go out and do the homework and make sure they know what's going on. I had the pleasure to sit in the audience for a different hearing. And I hear, well, these people are not professionals. No, these people are volunteers. But these people are people who care deeply about the community and that is why they're here. And I really respect the value of the work that this board does and I stand by. My previous.
Okay. I'm going to jump to this third one where the denial of an application is an unconstitutional taking. And. I'm surprised to even see that as. A taking of the property would mean that anything is denied from use of it and you're taking all their uses away from them. And in fact, the only, they still have all the uses that are available to them under the zoning.
All the residential uses?
Code. Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
And so based on that, you, you have no unconstitutional.
Number, number three was, to me, is completely disingenuous. I just, I just completely disagree with that. There is, there are uses for that property. Granted, it's residential and it may involve development of the property. But it would be residential use, which is acceptable and in keeping with the rest of the commu- uh, the rest of the neighborhood. In no way did we say you can't develop that property at all. It was suggested by somebody in the audience that they could give it, but that was a suggestion from someone in the audience.
Correct.
And the zoning board did not say that they couldn't use it. Zoning board simply said that it was not appropriate for a conference center with the, with the particular accessory use that they wanted. So number three, I think, is totally.
And number two now is based off of all the evidence that was provided to the board. At the time and the decision was based on the evidence that was provided.
And I.
Is this a conference center we're talking about, number, number two?
Yes.
I've got something to say about that.
Please.
In this letter that I read, it was just submitted by, uh, their attorney. They can, I think, and I, I, I don't want to say it was done intentionally, but I think there was a confusion between conference center and, uh, girls camp. A girls camp is not allowed in an IRS zone. There's no ifs, ands or buts about it. It says, and it's right here, it says, not allowed. I looked for the definition because they were confusing, uh, conference center and, and, uh, girls camp. I could find a definition, I could find a definition of a conference center. You can read that definition and it says there is no indication in any way that they're talking about a, 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 a girls camp. The girls, the conference center. Well, anyway, the girls camp is strictly not allowed. I don't know who, why, why they kept going after that because.
Well, they're, they're trying to prove, they, they insist that a girls camp is a reasonable accessory use to a conference center. And they present, represented that same stack of, of, of conference centers that have associated camps. And honestly, that is one of the things that made me vote against it because every single one of those is huge compared to that island.
And not only that. Not allowed.
But, but it's, it's not allowed.
And you said that right from the beginning, that, but, but I think that the confusion here for all of us and what made this so difficult. Was because this entire application and the presentation, this plan is for a camp.
Is for a camp.
It's totally a campground and all the uses, it's these tents and we have the nurse station, the arts and crafts pavilion, the dining facility. The entire plan is presented as, as, as the primary use being the campground. And they turned it around and said the primary use is the conference center because they, they didn't want to get a variance. We knew that because they tried to get a variance before and it got, you know, it didn't go far. So the applicant has, now they're trying to, they've confused the situation by saying it's a conference center when, as the primary use. But all the presentation is that the primary use is the girls camp, which. Would have to be, um. It's a very short season out there, five months. And if you're going to run a girls camp.
Ten weeks, that's what you're talking about.
You're talking about the three major months. That's the primary use. And I'm sure that, that consultant from Colorado said at one point that this was the primary income driver. You know, over the conference center. I could be wrong about that. I'd have to go back and listen to the tapes. But, I mean, all the evidence points to a girls camp with a conference center as a secondary use. So that's what's so confusing about everything.
But the thing is, the, the conference center still isn't allowed. It, it, it may be allowed by variance.
By special exception.
But when you look at the criterion for special exception, it doesn't fit. Because that street is, is probably the most isolated street in the city of Laconia.
Pogus Bay Road.
Pogus Bay Road. It has no beginning and no end. It's, well, you can't drive through the street. You get into the street by driving down and bisecting the middle of the road and either taking right or left and go to the end of the street and then back. There is nothing, there, a conference center would completely change the, uh, tenor of the community. It's now a quiet residential community. You're going to put a conference center in there for sixty to eighty people, uh, to go, to go in there and, uh, uh, have parties and have a good time. And, uh, it just disrupts the neighborhood. And I, and that's why I voted against it.
I agree.
And I, and I think that we, we saw that and I said this before, the, the entire neighborhood, all the director butters, everybody's against this. There's nobody that wants this in their neighborhood. Um, so it's, it's.
I, I, I agree. And the other, the comment that in this present, re-presentation, request for rehearing, that the applicant has already put money into it, that's the applicant's problem.
He should have got a permit first.
If you, if you choose to put the money into your development before you get the necessary variances or permits or approvals, that's your problem. And it's not as if he doesn't have another use for the property. He can still recoup that investment by developing it residentially, if that's what he chooses to do. The only new things that were submitted in this were the three letters from the city, but that wasn't presented to us at the time.
Bad opportunity and that's new evidence that has no bearing on the facts of the decision.
On the decision that we had, the material that we had before us, that material was not there. We were not given that information at the time we made our decision.
Was available.
And I firmly believe that we made the appropriate decision, the proper decision. I wouldn't change any of our discussion or any of our decision. I think you behaved.
My thinking, I, I think.
Admirably.
I think that I, a lot of thought went into the decision. I went through the criteria as best I could. And I would like to request that my denial stand.
I, I firmly, I, I agree with you. I.
So then we're looking to have a motion to deny.
Deny the request.
The rehearing.
I would make the motion to deny the request for rehearing.
Second.
Okay. Oh, any discussion of that? There being none? All those in favor? Okay. Denial of the rehearing. Now, we got one more thing. Collection of officers.
I'll make a motion to appoint Steve Bogert, Chairman of the Planning Board for the year two thousand eighteen.
I'll second that.
We have motion. All those in favor? Okay, I obviously. Vote for myself. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, nominate Suzanne Pearlie as our vice chair.
Slash.
Slash secretary?
Slash secretary.
I second that, yeah.
She did a good job that she's done and the support that she's given to this board.
Awesome. Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor? Okay. And you're going to vote for yourself, I hope.
I'm going to vote for yourself.
Okay, that covers all the elections that are needed, I do believe. Is there any other? I have a question. That doesn't need to be during the board meeting. Well, yeah. What happened with the request for rehearing for the, uh. The deck?
Oh, the, the Pogus, it was denied, yes.
Is, if I, if I've done my math correctly. The thirty days, uh. Timeframe from your denial of the rehearing to go to court has, has, has passed. And I did put a call into legal to find out if, if anything had been filed and I had not heard back from, from legal yet. So I'm, the answer is I'm not sure, but.
But this board denied the rehearing.
We did, we did.
I was trying to clean up some of my old business.
We did, yeah.
And, uh, I guess that covers it. Any other business before the board tonight? All those in favor? Good night. Thank you, everybody. We did an awesome job tonight.